You give them. But I.
Oh, I.
Get it. But he said, no, I need to get him one. That's Israeli.
Well, he said.
Is he?
The guy in his soul.
Um.
Um.
Yeah, the floor I clear.
Why did if you have a white old juice, I be honest, I'm not a lawyer. I haven't asked me to look for that.
Wow.
Yeah, that that'd be always have since. Yeah, if you have it right there, yeah, then shoot it to my email.
I'm looking for it.
Okay.
It's been heard it. I got it. He can form a.
Yeah. What they.
Okay, I read this way.
Yeah.
But everybody has got to be considering.
Thursday.
So um Molly, just the fire uh. It's just they reach out to.
And he can.
Have on retained, but if we have it right here, then.
Use it.
Okay, thanks.
And then here. So they take. It's.
Oh.
Wow, no. No, no. Well, that's. But.
Bye.
Yeah. That's you. I don't know. Yes, whatever. Um, I don't know. I don't. You can't even explain it. So you're just. Thanks, guys. J A D.
Right. I have seven o'clock. I'd like to call in order the regular scheduled council meeting Tuesday, April eighteenth. About twenty three is. Try me on a.
I'd love to believe that it's truly the life of the United States of America. And consider the problem for which stands. One nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on, I have three main instructors, Robert.
Hey, evening, everyone. Um. Okay, it looks like we do have someone to. Um, if you guys want a time is appropriate and you guys have a comment in Zoom. Uh, please use the comments or the reaction button. Raise your hand so we can respond to you as appropriate. And also, um, members of the board, um, just because of uh, couple meetings passed, make sure when you're speaking, you're speaking into your mic. Um, clearly, so we can uh, people on the video can hear well as well.
Thanks, Robert. All right, item number four, people, the meeting.
Could we do introduction before that hearing, just so everybody? From a voice perspective and locations.
Hmm.
Please.
Hi, we're we're soft. Guy, right here, some of the street and you told me superintendent.
Nathan Stricker, trailer clerk.
Molly Weber, member at large, eight twenty-two, South Clear Lake Drive.
Brent Foster, member of large, ninety-five, Penner Drive.
During tour, district three.
Damn, repeat. District two, one twenty-six, Lakeside Court.
George Chinkle, one order one, uh, one thirty-four, West Clear Lake.
For summer town wash. Robert, all hands are in the street.
All right. So back to item number four, medium agenda.
It's Molly. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. Yes. Show.
This is Brandon. I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. I'll vote in favor to the five percent nine.
Aye.
While the same time, motion carries. Moving on, item five. Two of monthly reports. You all received minutes from the March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. Are there any additions or corrections? Not enter chamber.
This is mentor president. As long as we use the individual documents that were presented to us, they are correct. If not anywhere. Within the complete meeting packet where it should state motion, it states moon. Are there any other court corrections?
Uh, they've never seen an awarding group or it's been changed from moon to motion.
I'll look at the individual ones. They're correct. But if you look at the. If you look at the individual ones, they're correct. If we look at what is in the count. EC meeting complete packet. Everywhere in there where it should say move uh, motion says moon. As long as we're approving the original ones, I would make a motion to approve. Okay, the version without.
Which I think is listed as final march minutes instead of listing in tonight's.
Yeah, those are correct, but that is different from.
Once.
The completed packet. The completed packet states. On the first council actions, George Chinkles, or. Molly Weber made a moon to move unfinished business and new business up on the agenda. George Chinkle seconded the moon, moon passed.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the March meeting minutes as documented in as final March minutes.
I'm saying that.
Yeah. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of taking five by Saint I.
Uh, same thing for the special sessions. So I'll make a motion to approve. Maybe. Number three, special session meeting minutes from four three twenty twenty-three.
It's Molly. I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of taking five of Saint I.
I.
While the same time. All right, item B, March voucher register warrant, Nathan.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, this evening is March voucher. Um. The dates are going to run from three twenty-one, which is the day. Business day after last meeting until four fourteen. Uh, on this voucher, there is fifty-seven warrants on the general account. In the amount of one hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. This is a little bit higher this month because we have two DLC invoices on here. Um, and that is the majority of why this bill is a little bit higher compared to previous months. Um, as far as the steward side of things, we have twenty-one steward warrants for a total of. Forty-five thousand fifty-six dollars and forty-four cents. On the steward side, there was a sixteen thousand dollar uh grinder system. That is a little bit out of the ordinary, so that was why that side of the uh voucher is a little bit higher. Also, for this month, we had to pay out quarterly meetings to all the members that are on all the committees. And also the payments from Bay to the town council members. Um. If you have any questions, please let me know.
So you did confirm because I didn't know this, Mr. Stricker, you had new craters, there's no question mark.
It wasn't. They are there, the new grinder stations.
Stations, yeah.
Now I see it down here. Okay, that's showing.
That was the one question that I had. I talked to a guy about that. And the total that I'm going to ask for the council to approve tonight is a hundred and sixty-one thousand, one one dollars and seventy cents.
And Nathan, I mentioned to you offline, but on the uh, they're both in March thirty first. There are two payments that I don't think are consistent with the ordinance uh, to. Um, Jim McLean and Bill Hannah. Would you please check for your.
Yes, I'll absolutely um. Review that and make sure that those payments are correct.
Wasn't that the one that was misspelled?
So which one stand Jim McLean and which was the other one?
Bill Hannah.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I think, based on my memory, it was me first. Bill Hannah might have. Had two different meetings that he got paid out for, invited one, but not playing these.
Um, okay, did this chat? Yeah, I will check on that.
Any other questions for this Nathan? Uh, I don't think much.
I would, I would make a motion to approve uh, uh. Once the uh, the two actions are. Are uh involved.
I would second that motion. This is Brandon.
Motion.
I.
Moving on. Golf cart and.
Yes, so we received feedback from our legal team that was provided to the rest of the council members in early April, uh, indicated that. I was going to ask if anybody had questions or wanted to discuss anything further. Um. That being said, I feel that we should. Move forward. In my opinion, with the suggestions that. Mister Park made on the golf cart ordinance. And bear with me, let's try to hold up.
If you have the date that you sent down.
Four two.
Thank you. Yeah.
For the golf cart ordinance. The recommendation was deletion of the flashing lamp definition and its requirement in the operations section. Flashing lamps only apply under I C nine twenty-one dash nine dash one when a golf cart is not under ordinary circumstances moved, operated, or driven at speeds greater than twenty-five miles per hour. I don't know if we can say that about the current golf carts, and I'm not aware that any are being operated with a flashing light. You may want to add in the operations section, paragraph ten, D, at least one tail lamp mounted on the rear. That when lighted emanates a red light plainly visible from a distance of five hundred feet to the rear. Chris, would that suffice to the concerns that we had talked about with the flashing light that was.
If they took the flashlight off and had a red light on the rear, that that would suffice because most golf carts nowadays have the tail lamps. Some of the older ones do not. So there's got to be something on the rear that would make them visible, so a red lamp wouldn't work.
So I suggest for the golf cart ordinance that we move forward um, typing out the official. The official new ordinance, getting that to Mister Park. So he can help us create an advertisement and then we have Nate. Get the advertisement in place and move forward with the adoption of that ordinance. The second ordinance is for the parking. And. When we were in receive his initial feedback. Gosh, when we first. I don't even remember the date up ahead when we first started talking about parking ordinance. He was concerned about the hour time limit, and we have discussed that with the current. Board and with passports that Chris has had the ability, as do the deputies, to make it around a lake within an hour, so it can be monitored. I feel that. We should leave that in place because of the examples that have been brought forth in the past. The other section, the other point of section seventy-two point oh two. That he brought to our attention is adding dead ends and cul-de-sacs is really a surplus of of words because they're technically part of the street and unnecessary to call out. However, that verbiage was added to this ordinance because of specific questions. So I feel that. A few extra words isn't going to kill us and that we should leave that in there for the ordinance and his final. Um, thoughts. On the parking ordinance were that we leave the zoning officer and street superintendent out as enforcement officers. This has also been discussed numerous times at multiple. Multiple boards and it seemed to be a majority of those boards felt that it was a good idea to leave them as enforcement officers to utilize the resources of the town. When they're on site, they can issue a citation. One of his other concerns was they shouldn't be directing any vehicles to be towed, but the way that we have it written and. Chris's earlier suggestion that only the town marshal or deputies are able to have a vehicle towed. So in my opinion, we move forward with the parking ordinance as presented to Mister Park. So I feel we should move forward with the suggestions on the golf cart ordinance. And we should leave the parking ordinance as discussed and agreed upon in the past. Open for discussion.
It's Molly, and I've got one question. So and I think Guy will remember the scenario. Um. So as I understand this, then what you're saying is that Guy could not ask somebody to move out of the road if the road is blocked.
I can ask them to move out of the road.
Right, and then call the marshals. You know exactly the, I mean, we have, we have a situation where our road was blocked. For over all all day. And I know um, but Guy had managed that very well, and we didn't have any marshals or deputies on duty. And if I wouldn't have been able to say something, I mean, I did as a neighbor. Um, so as long as Guy is comfortable with that and is willing to say something, it's it's very important because we didn't have anybody else out here. That could have that conversation. So as long as Guy's willing to have the conversation with.
Most generally, everybody moves. If they don't, you just say, well, I'll call a marshal or the sheriff at the burden. That usually expedites things.
Yep. So. So I'm good with everything else.
I'm good.
Yep.
So um, I just wanted to ask Guy and and uh, Robert if. You know what? Whether you're comfortable with uh issuing citations.
Back to me. As long as Chris is okay with us doing that. Because our, if they write them, I'll review them. They'll get turned into the town court to be paid. Um, if they don't get paid, if I have to actually turn them in the. The magistrate court down in the angle one. Um, to be presented, I have to actually sign them, so I definitely review it, make sure they're actually correct before you submit them to the court, otherwise they just get turned into. The town clerk for payment. The town clerk is my mission.
Okay, is there any devil's one of the details of that with them?
Let's have this.
I say, is there any devil on the details when I'm issuing uh citations that then you find that are correct?
Yeah, those are, I mean, we, once I review them, if they have to go to the 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 clerk or the court. Um, then obviously I'm discussing with whoever grows them to make sure that they are correct and everything. Your orders were all correctly. I mean, obviously, there was this issue where it wasn't properly directed in that citation. They're voided out. Before reading. So.
Okay.
Off the subject, just for my clarity, uh, Fremont Court is abandoned now. So what uh, hopefully understand what court do we go to? So all the traffic violations due into submit magistrate court, which is the best organization. Yes. Hey, thank you.
That answered your question, Dan, that will have an issue with either. Okay, I read citations funny.
If you get ready for speed again. No, no, we're not going to.
Okay, yeah, just uh, thinking through the details here. Um, so we have three people out on the roads presumably at any one time. Uh, we've got a one hour time limit it takes. How will we discern? Between the three individuals who's who's who. Who's got the one hour time limit and who's generating the citations?
So my responsibility would be is that marshal is on duty at the timeframe, um, either Guy or I'll notify the marshal that, hey, we've got a vehicle blocking the roadway. The marshal would be the primary person to take care of that. And for some reason, um, there's not a marshal on duty at the timeframe, then Guy or Bob, uh. We never decided which one's going to follow violation. First, that adds in the vehicle parked in the roadway, and then is it still there an hour later from when they observed it?
And actually, me and Guy have a pretty good communication, like when one of us are mainly when he sees some, he usually calls me up and says, hey, I saw this and. Uh, he's busy at some way we can notate at the same time, so that way we both can actually keep that. So. We're pretty good with our communication in the office.
Yeah. So then I would just ask George, as the H R person, to make sure that the job descriptions get disclosed through.
Okay, with the other day that we're having since of all. Yeah, we just, we just rolled out this current job descriptions and they're under review right now.
And as a clarification point, both the zoning administrator and the street super, street and sewer superintendent. Have this authority only while they are performing their normal town responsibilities.
Anyone else? Performing. All right, moving on, new business. Road committee updated, Dan.
Yeah, um, I want to, again, and I will whenever I give an update, I want to thank uh, the volunteers on the road committee. They're. They're carrying the load quite well. We've had two meetings uh, so far since we were last together. We did achieve. Um, a release vision statement. Uh. And uh, last week, uh, we were, the last session, we were attempting to finish commission statement. Um. And unfortunately, there was a Zoom scheduling con- uh, conflict where our meeting was interrupted. In the middle with the uh, Fremont Schools uh, referendum meeting. So. We got that process updated and hopefully we won't have that conflict anymore, but uh. The next session, uh, looking forward to constructive discussion and and finalizing the mission statement, and then uh, we'll start discussing the uh, the tools and the procedure by which we prioritize road segments. Uh, for maintenance and improvement. Everyone's going well. Good team. Uh I will, I will just mention that again, the meeting minutes are posted on webpage under um. Uh street uh department. And then I will also make mention that uh. Under the announcements banner on the homepage, you will find a road construction to put where the CCMG. Uh updates will be posted, um and we've got kind of a, an overall description of. Of the next steps and the timing that right now we see the road projects uh start.
Yeah, Dan, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes.
Um one is um just based on some of the road meetings that we had previously and all the public feedback. Is I I appreciate that you guys have your mission and vision, but is there also um like checks and balances in place? If we do take on a segment. And there's, it doesn't appear that it's gonna go out of the scope of what DLC has put together. Will somebody come back to you and you bring it to council so we have an idea of what's going on with that road, so we don't have Clear Lake Cove? Repeat, I guess, because we found out that that, you know, was over time and if we would all would have been informed. Earlier in the process. Um so is there, is that part of the discussion is what if we get into a segment? And there's other things that are going on that are outside the scope of what DLC has put in the ground? How will we as council be informed? I guess that's my question.
I don't, I don't know what outside of the scope would include.
Well, so for example, during the road meetings, we heard that the segment from Lakeview, the West Clear Lake, there could be things underneath. That um maybe worse than we even appear that might be make that challenging. And that's from somebody that is an expert on roads. And what if we find that out? And we have to alter or change the plan that was initially set for it?
Okay.
Does API just go ahead and do it? Or will we as council members be informed that we ran into this problem and this is what? These are a couple of solutions that we have.
Yeah, so.
Does that make sense?
We've got a plan, um the plan uh during execution is that we'll have daily meetings. Um with API and DLC. Um my intention is to try and support that myself, uh so that would be the triad. If there's major uh major issues that would uh result in. Cost and or significant, significant changes in cost, I don't even definition of what significant is. Um then uh we would, I would regroup council just to inform.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks, Dan.
Yes.
Right, uh item B, police department donation, Christine McCross.
Good evening. Thank you so much for this time letting, you know, telling me the last time that was okay to be put on the agenda. I'm here with Terry Fugate. She is my co-chair for Back the Blue. You remember last year we brought you six fifty. This year we have a donation for you, Chris, uh two thousand four hundred and thirty. So we did much better. And I brought some save the dates because we're gonna do it again. And we would love it if we could have a few of you show up to come out and help support. Again, sixty percent of everything that we make. Comes back to all seven departments in the county. So, thank you for what you do. We really appreciate. All the men that are willing to serve and take care of our county. And we are really hoping to see some of you.
Hey, Christine, could you share which organization this is money this from, please?
Yeah, this money comes from the Steuben County GOP. So, and the Steuben Republican Women, so um. For those of you that don't know me, I'm a, I'm your county councilwoman for this district. And Carrie and I got involved with the party about eighteen months ago. Um we ended up running and we ended up, they've done this on and off. In the past two years, like four, yeah, and. We decided to get involved and we really grew it. The party really is behind. Supporting our police officers, so like I said, sixty percent of the profit. We did buy equally between the seven departments in the county. And so it's for their donation fund for them to, I believe you use it towards your boat fund.
Yes.
Yes, so we had the opportunity of giving it the money to Fremont today too and they're gonna use it for payment. So, so we just care, we're just people who care about this community that want to give back.
Thank you very much.
Right, item C, HR hiring update. That's gonna be a comeback to Paul here. As the council's aware, there's an open position in our street utility worker. Uh Guy and I have been working together to fill that position. Uh we advertised on Indeed and also on our website along with the Clear Lake Bowling Board. And the results have been very good. Uh through Indeed, we've had thirty two responses to date. Few more still dribbling in each day, but as of the seventh, thirty two. We had one person apply here at the office, so a total of thirty three. Uh on Monday, Guy and I, Guy time in, uh the void here, but on Monday, Guy and I interviewed four individuals. Of which uh we haven't concluded, but I would say two were individuals to follow up and I actually reached out to them. For references and uh two, we just have one hold. We haven't said no, but we're just. At bay right now. Uh I also asked for three more interviews. I reached out to those individuals. I have. One confirmation, uh and I'm waiting to hear from another two that'll wait on Thursday and I'll send you a confirmation, so. Uh we're targeting to fast forward this uh probably early next week to uh convene an executive committee. Hopefully we'll have a candidate that we agree on and can bring forward for a council to meet and decide on. We uh proceed with that, which was an offer. Guy, did I miss anything? All right, that's pretty much the wrap on HR.
I just want to say thank you both. I know it was unexpected, you know, when it happened, but you guys have clearly picked things up and ran with it. So thank you both for taking the time and interviews your groupies, so I'm vote for vote everybody, both sides.
I think both Guy and I were surprised at the number of responses that we received through Indeed. I was. Was expecting very few and there was really little title read that came at us.
Yeah, cause the last time we had that posted on there, we didn't get, I don't think we got nearly that many responses.
This is great, thank you. And then maybe before we end tonight, we can get the executive, so we need to find ones too with the individuals. Cause if we've got that many strong candidates, I don't think we want to wait too long on that.
That's correct.
So.
That's it, all right. Moving on, monthly reports, financial report, Nathan.
Yeah, um tonight I've uh prepared three different reports, funding report, image. Um I think we're all pretty familiar with looking at. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. I have all these um reports on file. One note and and the appropriation report, if you look through the. Um I know it can get a little daunting when you see all these different numbers, but um. Dan and Molly have noticed a couple of different things on here, but Molly noticed that there's a couple of different funds with negative. And what we need to do, what I've learned this week is that I can transfer some portions inside of a different. Inside of the same appropriation account to cover this funds. So if you do see any of these negative amounts in the unencumbered balance portion. First of all, they, I can do, the MBH equipment repair is that um negative nineteen thirty nine eighty seven. That's going to be positive um after today's report. Because you can move certain monies inside of certain points. Uh if you have any more questions about that, feel free to reach out to me. That report would be on file and then uh finally the revenue reports on file, which is always nice to see every month. Cause that, that report shows you exactly what money's coming in from where. Um so that report will be on file as well. And next month, I am going to present the annual report. Um for the year two thousand and twenty two, that is all completed, so um that would be available to the council. And residents as well, um at the next council. And that's all I have for tonight.
And I just want to add, um thank you, Nathan, when you were working with um Brett and I as we were getting ready to understand the. LIT and what we have as we're getting ready for the fire contract, um that you called that correction on the fire contract. The wrong number was entered in the budget and that you made that adjustment within that fund, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, as I'm learning this position, I'm figuring out new things every day and uh. So it's a, it's a learning curve, but I'm feeling very confident at this point, so.
Always learning, that's.
Anything else to move?
Uh item B, marginal report, Chris. Uh for the month of March, uh total hours worked were a hundred and eighty, few and a half hours, uh monthly miles driven were seven hundred and eight. Um police department handled five cases within the town, sheriff's office handled one within the town. And had nine cases within township. Report traffic violations, had one golf cart inspection, one vehicle inspection and one arrest. Uh the body armor that was ordered in February has arrived and was just issued out to those officers. Uh the Durango is scheduled to be owned to repair on May first and should be out of service for two weeks. So during that time frame, we will be utilizing the Tahoe uh for patrol purposes. Uh radar signs that cover seven hundred east have been installed and. Rear patrol lot should be placed into service, bend the water in at eight. Probably the wind blows out like it's been doing. Um as far as our calls for service, uh police department had two agency assists. Uh one property damage, one mental problem and one traffic offense. Uh the sheriff office inside the town limits had a property damage crash. And in the township, they had a disorderly, a juvenile problem, a property damage crash, a theft, a welfare check. Domestic uh mental problem, a fraud and an unauthorized.
So have you run a report on the seven hundred?
No, not yet. Uh those signs actually just had them up last week. So they were put up on Wednesday, so they have the end of the weekend. I will run the, I will get the integration office radar signs on or around the day first. I'm actually what I use to pull the information, so.
Speaking of signs, I also noticed the no semi and some of the. So the golf cart signs going up, so thank you guys both for getting the communications out there.
Uh I think we have four or five more that need to go up, but I talked to Guy about where those.
Next time, uh Shane and where the control could build up.
Yes, cause the donator was asking and so as they went around, so it was great to see that some were out.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else for Chris? All right, moving on, fire department report.
All right, for the month of March, we had one agency assist, one down fire power line. One vehicle accident within the town of Clear Lake. We had one CO two investigation within the Clear Lake Township. And we are currently engaged with the Fremont Fire Department on future contract options. And as in addition to that, we're also working with our Department of Treasure to make sure we've got. The pieces of information in place to have a good negotiation.
Great, so many administrators, Robert.
Uh yeah, so I have uh four for the month, seven for the year, actually have more than that now. Um and then uh two silver and not required, no planning commission. Uh but we do have one coming up uh next month. Want to be there, we'll gladly take you. Uh BCA, we had. Uh variance request on the fifth, that, or I'm sorry, we had a BCA hearing on the fifth. Um it was for training of new appoint appointments to the um. To the uh board, board, thank you. And then on the eleventh, uh we had uh three variance requests. Um case uh twenty three uh dash zero one A and B uh were from. Dennis and Jackie Kaiser, both of the requests were denied. Uh then twenty three dash zero two from John Lundy, that was approved with no conditions. Um projects still going on at the planning commission, uh we saw the twenty. Sorry. Yeah, I'm working on it. All right, um. Sorry, uh so anyways, um twenty two dash zero two. Um the stuff has been published for quite a while for a public hearing and then it just went into the paper as well. Uh for the final ten days, so if you want to get your feedback phones in, make sure you get them in before the uh. Hearing uh our planning commission, planning commission meeting. Uh so far, final mileage is eighty four. Uh given a total of fifty four, eight, eight, nine, that's what I used for.
Any questions?
Uh I, it's Molly and I would just like to say, and I know there were a lot of people in the room at the BCA meeting. But also as somebody that zoomed in, Robert, you did a great job. Um clarifying what the motion was because it was really difficult. One, I think that was part of the conversation at the end of the BCA is. The framing and the context, whether it's in a positive or a negative. But for somebody that zoomed in, I really appreciated the fact that you clarified the motion before the vote was taken. So thank you for that.
Yep, no problem. Molly, as a person who zoomed in, how was the total audio?
Um not good. Um Robert and I talked about that earlier this evening and that's part of why Robert shared with everybody. Your microphone's on, speak into the microphone. I think that's why I asked Darren for the introductions at the beginning. We all know everybody, but if somebody were to go back on the recording, just acknowledging or hearing voices that are familiar, it's easier. I did notice that some voices, um and we all know some of us have stronger voices and everybody can hear. Um when you're looking down, I think that may cause some challenges, but Robert and I talked about it and I think that's something that we're gonna work on. And why he did the reminder for all of us tonight.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, superintendent's report, Craig.
I worked a total of a hundred and ninety three hours last month. I issued one road cut permit. Zero down permits and then three letters of non objection. I had thirty locates, five alarm calls. Um grinder pumps on hand, I had, or I replaced three grinders, repaired five and we didn't set up any new ones. I have ten grinders ready to go in the system, four still in the box. Or boxed and ready to be set up. Uh my average daily flow was twenty nine thousand nine hundred and sixty four down ones. Sewer department summary, um I've been changing a lot of grinders lately due to the power outages we've had. Um I actually have, I took five more grinders up to CEM to get rebuilt, um three of them are. Two of the three exceeded what I felt comfortable spending money or what I felt comfortable putting into used grinders to have rebuilt. So I have an estimate of four thousand three hundred and twenty six fifty one to have three more and rebuild at CEM. And I also went ahead and got. With the amount that we've been changing, I'm afraid that we're gonna have a lot more when people start showing back up. So I got a quote from TriStar on, they came in after my report was put out. Um for twelve more Liberty Grinders, uh which would be a total of. Three thousand or thirty seven thousand six hundred and ninety three dollars and thirty three cents. Um they have gone up significantly, um they're. Three thousand one hundred and forty one dollars and eleven cents a piece new. I've kind of capped the rebuild at around two thousand. Is where I feel comfortable doing them at. I did have it fifteen hundred. So I guess I need a approval to purchase twelve new ones and have the other three rebuilt that are in. CEM now.
What was that figure for the twelve?
Uh thirty seven thousand six hundred and ninety three, thirty three. And then uh total for the other was four thousand three hundred and twenty six fifty.
Okay, um I can make a motion. Okay, uh, I can make a motion to uh, repair and purchase. Purchase new uh grinders that are prescribed uh by Guy for a not to exceed of forty-three thousand dollars.
We're gonna have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it if we have a chance to have discussion after a second. Second, Nate. You may not be able to answer this now, that's fine.
Are we paying for it?
Uh, what was the total number that we had budgeted for in twenty-twenty-three? Do you remember, Guy?
I think we had budgeted for twenty, either twenty-four or thirty-six.
Order them in that twelve, in the bottom twelve.
Well, the last time we ordered them, I ordered. And we're still, we have not ordered any pumps and probably close to this year.
Good for me.
More other discussion?
I mean, I'm, I'm kinda in agreement with Guy, I think when people get up here, I think there's a lot of. Several more because of, you know, the way the power serves the area.
And I'd rather be prepared, but I'll the one to look at, look at the funds, so if we're going above what we had budgeted for the. We make sure we keep that in mind as the year goes on.
Yeah, and that would be my only ask, Guy, is if you could put that in, and this might be short notice when you got this back. But if you could put that in your report, so we have those answers.
Normally, I have that in my report. I did not get this until yesterday.
Yeah.
It was like stuck in the email where it would not open.
Well, and you have the forty-three hundred one in your report. You just didn't have larger ones.
Yeah, I did not have that one, cause it was just like, it was in the middle of sending, it said it was there, but it wouldn't let me open anything. He ended, I called him yesterday morning and ended up resending it and came through.
No, it's not, I mean, I appreciate, and you had your report up, so we, before the weekend, which looks great. It's just that way we could have had this question answered in the future, so that's awesome. Thank you, Guy. That's all I know.
Street department, um.
Give you your money.
We have a motion in a second, any more discussion? Uh, those in favor, same, 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 I?
I, I.
Same sign, I'm curious.
Uh, the street department, um, hopefully, if we don't have another incident like yesterday. I will get ready enough to take the salt spreader and all the snow equipment out of the dump truck. And we will start picking up leaves possibly the end of this week, but I'm guessing it'll be next week. Um, and I've got, I've noticed several potholes that have showed up over the last week, ten days. So I'll be working on those also. And street truck mileage for the month was two hundred eighty-two. I think that's all I have.
Any questions for Guy?
Uh, a quick question. I've been getting phone calls about pick pickup. When you do leave, you don't touch it.
We do not touch sticks, we will pick up leaves. If there are sticks in the pile, then we go right past it.
Could we put something out there on there, Guy?
That is my intention for tomorrow.
That was gonna be my point in the general discussion. There's a couple of things that have been brought up and I haven't noticed them on the website. So Nate, I was wondering if you could work with Jen and get that memo that was provided. For the BCA and the town council members that were discussed at the last meeting. Get that up on the website, somewhere within the BCA, it's the document that um, Dan provided. Or some of the responses that we all had seen. The questions that were asked on why things were being brought up, I think that's important information that needs to be out there. And in addition to that, piggybacking off the last one. Comments about. In the street section about your grinders, when the power comes out. So people understand, we need to get that on the website too. We're making a strong push for better communication. There are things that we know about, we've known about them for a while, we need to get those up on the website.
Yeah, Brett, thanks for bringing that up. We've had some challenges as far as um Jen's um availability. To get things on the website, um, for interest, we have a meeting on Monday where George and I and Nathan and Jennifer will be. Getting together, um, so we can reconnect and um stressing importance of getting those things posted on the website. And also who all has access to the website, so that way it's not just one person having access. Um, but whether, who those additional peoples are, cause I know there was something um, Dan needed posted. And it, there was some, a, a time delay, so we are working on that and we have a meeting on Monday.
So we've got, so right now, we've got the grinders, we've got the BCA hearing memo.
But I'll work with Jen on that, cause I could probably go some under, there's only a generator page anyways.
Okay, and the grinder's gonna go on the.
Under the street.
Under the street and then we're gonna do the branches as well.
Yeah.
In the street section, we get all, all of that in there. Was it, sorry, I'm trying, cause it was.
No, your planning is perfect. We were just discussing, you know, when that we could have that meeting, um, because it's. Getting dates has been a challenge for us. An individual.
Anything else for Guy? Alright, council member reports. Anything not already covered?
Well, I touched uh earlier on the, on the HR side, but picking up on what Molly mentioned. Uh, Guy, I think it would be premature if we would target Monday for an executive session to decide on this job. We had two candidates, uh, I've reached out, um, I've gotten uh referral names and numbers on one. The other one's not responded yet, but hopefully we'll get that. I can, you know, I can do the references.
Can't say I can be here, uh, I mean, I did not look at the calendar.
Okay.
So, that would be my concern.
I think we probably need to target Monday, Tuesday of next week at the latest uh, drop our spike here.
So maybe if you guys could just do an email, um, maybe Guy, after you come in tomorrow and you have an idea. If you guys could just drop an email to all of us.
Correct my memory, how much we time to be on executive committee? Forty-eight hours, okay.
Well, and if I'm putting a notice in the mail, sometimes we need, you know, a few more days. Cause it doesn't, when I go to the newspaper and put in a notice, sometimes it doesn't let me do it for three or four days. Until it's gonna actually get in the paper, so we'll probably need at least seventy-two hours, okay?
Either should work, could work for me based on what works stuck out.
I'm waiting for a response, but.
So, well, hold, hold that tight.
I reached out to three candidates, those extra ones, I've heard back from one, right on here tomorrow. We'll cut them off, we'll go with the one and then we'll have three people to, to home in on. Monday is out, okay? So they can Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, okay, I know Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Not at five or six.
What time works?
Seven.
So five thirty.
Seven? Seven, seven, you got it, okay, so we do seven.
I can do seven. It's been seven o'clock for the executive session.
Okay, kind of good. Okay, thank you.
Alright, anything else?
Yeah, it's Molly, I've got, uh, okay. Uh, some of us um here in the room attended the Fremont School Referendum meeting here. And I would just encourage us, and that's probably something else we wanna put on the website Monday. Is the link to the website, the community school website with the information on the referendum. So people can do um some homework um before they vote on the second. As well as the Steuben County Economic Development Coalition. Reached out to all council members in the county, not just town of Clear Lake. And they were, they're looking at their five-year plan and so they did interviews with council members that were available. And just talked about where, what our vision was for Clear Lake five years from now and what is our vision for the county. And so that, those were some dialogues that um we had with the Economic Development Committee. And then I just have an ask of the department leads is if we could have the department reports posted. On the team's file the Friday before the council meeting. Um, most of us are in full-time jobs and the weekend is the best time for us to prepare, so. Um, if we could just have that happen, that would be great. And that's all I have there.
Anyone else? Alright, general discussion. Hey, none? We have another thing. Oh, those favorite thing that I looked at, I?
I have it.
No, nobody added a five, you go for that.
Thank you.